I'd like to welcome everyone to the February 27, 2023 Union County School Board Meeting. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. First item is pleasure of allegiance with Ms. Aleah Ricketson and Journey Wallace. Please come forward.
So Jason, if we're getting down close enough, don't try to get the camera on them when you're saying much.
Thank you. Great job. Okay, the next item is approval of the agenda, but we had had to do an addition under financial. It would be number four. It would be revised BG1 for district-wide intercommon phone. With that addition, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Somewhere.
Mr. Gatten made the motion. Mr. Clutchett seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next item is recognitions. Number one, radon poster contest. Mr. Jackson?
Good evening. It's my honor to recognize Chloe Mason tonight. Recently designed this poster for the state wide competition to bring awareness to dangers of radon. And we were pleased to see her in second place coming out with this easy confidence. It was considered that it accepted entries from all across the country. Our teacher Dana Davis planned to be here and had to cancel at the last minute, but she sent me a message that she wanted me to agree on her behalf, so I wanted to do that. And Ms. Dana, Ms. Davis says, "I'm thrilled to hear Chloe's submission in the radon poster contest to place second. I've had the joy of teaching Chloe in drawing class and her skill, ability, and raw talent is evident in every medium she plays. Not to diminish the excitement and enthusiasm that is honored we are sharing tonight, but I'm certain the success we've showcased through the radon poster competition is only in glimpse of what we have seen from Chloe in the future. Congratulations Chloe. We are all very excited." So Chloe, we will step forward.
Congratulations.
Awesome job.
Next item is UCHS Beta Club. Ms. Clark.
I'm going to present it on Clark's behalf as well. Our Beta Club members of our main contract were recently attending the state conference and competed in several different competitions. And we had three students who qualified, who placed at the state level and qualified for the national level. And one of those was Chloe Mason. So congratulations. She actually placed in three different divisions, she was sports and drawing, she was a physical art, and third was on-site drawing. She said, "Congratulations. You go ahead and go for a game." And also, she played, she played four in the high. She said, "I don't really play, just not too good."
She went there. Congratulations lady. Next item is UCHS all district honor band. Mr. Jackson.
I'm taking the crowd a little more closely. We had two students. Michael Swain and Dakota Fagan. For Dakota Rushing. They had to audition for that. This second team had to be selected for them, selected them for the band. They both are percussionists, so they got to play in that. And then after you're selected, you actually go for a weekend with everyone else and you get to be placed in that band. You go through a couple of things, rehearsal and then play a concert. Because we had an opportunity to do that last month, and so we wanted to recognize them. Congratulations.
The next recognition is UCHS girls wrestling.
I'm first, my favorite, even aren't. First my legend in this year for the first time ever in Union County. We started trying to have a girls wrestling team. I wasn't sure how that was going to go. My daughter Savannah, who has won two state championships in a few years, girls wrestling, was one who really pushed for it. So I give her credit for actually getting the thing going and bringing the backing up to let them get a little bit to it. So I appreciate that for everybody that had handed letting us have a team. And started out, I think we only had four girls in the beginning, and we ended up getting something more. We ended up with seven. Unfortunately, a couple couldn't be here because they ended up being field trips. So we didn't want to get back to that. So anyway, we did really well with only seven girls. And a lot of the times, we only had four or five of them for tournaments. Because a lot of these girls just jumped in. Our seniors, yes, we have jobs, so there was some times where she couldn't make it. We didn't tease out right in the middle of season. She was not better. When we were actually taking third and fourth place against people who had those thirteen-year-olds, twenty-five-year-olds, we were still taking third and fourth place. Our girls did really well. We only had two girls that had ever wrestled before, I think. Somebody maybe done some good stuff. But for not having any experience, and these girls were tough, they came out and worked hard. And there was, I was super proud of how they did for never wrestling before. It was amazing, and I think hopefully it just drove. And I'd like to, anybody who doesn't know, Kentucky has just officially sanctioned girls wrestling.
That's right.
Chloe, we can get more girls coming out. We've got five other girls on Chloe's stage. And they paid, they got higher than anybody who was ranked to get to different levels. So they did very well there. And we kind of took everybody by surprise, although Union County makes it known better than Kentucky. So anyways. Well, even one school that's a girl, to the state tournament, and you ended up placing fifth in that. It was pretty exciting, especially with that. I'll start with our senior. Our seniors, yes, the girls ended up placing seventh at state. My favorite, she's my favorite out of all of them. She's the only senior that's gone. Totally stays because I don't think there was anybody more aggressive than she, just like a little holdup. Go, go and see what happens.
Always been too aggressive.
Yes, the first time ever, non-referees. I was referee for wrestling in Pennsylvania for six years before I moved here, six, seven years ago. And I was refereed one year last year. I was going to pick that up again before they go back into this. So I've never seen anybody get called for unnecessary wrestling because they've been shocked. Never seen it before in my life. And when she got called for it, it was completely dark and small in the background. Now, impressed with she was, she carried the rest. So she had called. I'm going to, I'm going to really thank this girl. And I'm glad she came out. And for somebody to be a senior trying new sports that they've never done before, such as sport like wrestling. Wrestling is a different, it's not like you get to go out there and hopefully your teammates pick up any slack. It's you and one other person, that's it. So it's, and it's a physically demanding sport. So I'm very proud of her. We had one junior, and she's the one that ended up having, she had a field trip. So I was hoping she might squeeze in here and then we're getting back to electric third or so. But three sprays, she took fifth. And wrestling, I don't know if anybody, you know wrestling forums, but they do it for the boys, they give it to the girls too. They have a little ranking, where they rank you in the state. She wasn't on that. But she came in and she actually, we only had two girls on that. So not only did she actually got one thirty through, and she ended up placing fifth. And I got cheated out of that because she hasn't been able to wrestle back to third. But because it wasn't sanctioned, you know, maybe the one-day tournament, you can't wrestle more than five times. The only reason she didn't have an option, maybe she'd go higher, I think she was the third, fourth, just related to that. And she has to run fast, probably, but anyway, so three sprays. And then I had a one sophomore, and she's also not. I don't know why, she just hasn't break forty. It's to make it, I would have evidence. Let's see, she's my favorite sophomore. We had one freshman. Daniel Bacon, my daughter, thank you, her, I don't know how many years she's been wrestling. Send, send newsletters. And she actually did the high school girl state last year, an eighth grader. And asked, asked if she could go. She just wrestled with the middle school all year long, wanted to go to the girl's high school state. And I let her go. I thought it was going to be a wasted trip, honestly, I'm not going to lie. I thought we were going to drive all the way over there, just to watch her go to an out, and maybe win one or something. And so glad at least I'll be home early and be sleeping in my own bed. And then, well, she wrestled her way all the way to the finals to beat the number one girl, and then to beat the number three girl. And then next thing you know, she's in the finals, and she ended up taking second for two juniors. So I was pretty excited about that. And then she came in this year, was up and down, putting ranks first in the state and second in the state, back and forth with a girl that she beat two weeks before state number. And lost her head in state finals, just that runner-up. But again, couldn't be more proud of her, to wrestle through the tail off, just myself. Time state runner-up, so she's just a club, she's a club beauty. She's now a two-time state runner-up too. So Daniel Bacon. Three more years. Then I had three eighth graders, three middle schoolers. This is where it always gets fun, knowing that we're a young team, we just started, it was our first time ever, and only had seven girls. But we had three eighth graders, I had a couple of sixth graders that came to some practice, but they weren't old enough yet to be at least seventh grade to wrestle high school, or anything to do it. But they came, and they're interesting. And if you look at our elementary programs, there are other girls, there's girls everywhere all the way.
That's great.
They just came out of nowhere, like, they're lovely girls. And it's something like, so the future is exciting now. You don't want to talk to some of these high school girls, then just give it a try. And maybe now that it's strengthened, it'll happen. But these eighth graders also wrestled their tail off. And the, I'll start with Diana Moody. Very shy, always smiling.
Even all the wrestling now, she's smiling.
Smiling, and had so many matches that she should have won, and was waiting up until the third period, and then she just kind of smiled. She's going to be tough, she's very strong. So she is another victim of the state layout, because they couldn't wrestle more than five matches. They couldn't have wrestle bags unless she made it to the quarterfinals. But she ended up losing her first match. I didn't even know until halfway through the tournament, somebody said, "Yeah, that's kind of crazy. You lose your first match, not even allowed to wrestle back." I'm like, "What are you talking about?" Couldn't wrestle for third. And she ended up going and winning her next three matches. I mean, she could have, you know, the worst way it ended up. So I was bummed about that. So who knows what she could have done at the state tournament. But from where she was at the beginning of the year, I was just super proud of the way they wrestled. And I can't wait for the next four years, four more years. Brayley Jackson. Another favorite of mine. I actually snagged her for football. She played football the last two years. So I heard that maybe she was going to be a seven. So she didn't want to wrestle, she didn't want to come up to try out. And like, I could tell she was trying to use her way out of it, but I pretty much passed the football back. I think she likes it now, I'm not sure. But she seemed to get into it to me. And she, this was the stage, she was so mad. She wouldn't even talk to me. She walked away, runs away, gets mad, don't want to talk to anybody. So she gets mad at me, blames everybody, everyone that's involved in her losing the match. So I like that. And that's one of the things about wrestling, is you have to not like losing. So if somebody, I know I can tell she's going to have, that's what I said, hey, first year at the walk, she ends up placing eighth at state. And. Good job. I sit there looking at Dennis. And I think this is just this year, first year, you always see your biggest jump, first, second years. For all our first-year wrestlers, I'm telling you right now, you don't even have to worry. You're going to see a big change next year, because you're going to start learning. Instead of learning for the bottom, you're going to start learning, hey, I already know this. And it's just going to be about getting better from now on. So Brayley Jackson, awesome. And last but not least, my, one of my favorites, Mean Girl on the Camp. She's probably the least one, I think, Jeffy. Sutton Fuller. She had a heck of a year, and there was only two girls on the state that she was, both through, twins with him. She did her first series come out, thrown down, she was just so strong. And another one that worked hard. And there's no, there's no, there's no messing around with her when she gets out on a match. She's totally different animal. I often ask people, like, to have a little fun next round. So she, she gets out there, and she's definitely a pair. With her and these other eighth graders and the girls we got coming up. I mean, I'm pretty sure we're going to have girls standing at the top of the podium real quick. Sutton Fuller, third place. Well, I finally, I want to say with everybody here, is that these girls, I'm telling you, I was a little bit surprised. And when I started at the beginning of the year, I said, "There's a lot of big differences between coaching boys, which I've done my whole life, and coaching women." I raised my girl by four, five, really tall. That's the time, but you go from having a whole lot of testosterone in the room with coaching them boys and them men did. And the girls, they asked, they asked more questions, for sure. There's a lot more, a lot more talking and. But I think they picked up tech people a lot better than the boys. Because they do pay attention, they do want to learn them. And I think they hate losing more than the boys. So I'm excited for what's going on. And hopefully now that it's strengthened, we get, we get more out. And I just want to thank again everybody I know, Tackin, and remember he had to talk to, make sure we were able to do it. I know we're limited on space, with the high school having a room, and the middle school keeping the other room. We were limited on our practices and stuff like that. Hopefully, we can do something a lot better for these girls, especially if we start pulling whole teams. Because everybody's got to be tired of just the boys winning state titles. So we're going to get the girls really soon. I think if we add a full squad, we're going to, we're going to see. We'll see. But anyways, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Middle school, boys are being bored, almost ninety-one percent. The high school is like six hundred and twenty-one, almost at ninety-one percent. You see a line of fifteen students on average for this month, and their average age is going to be one percent. Preschool is almost up to one ten, well, the middle school is almost ninety percent. If your type is hanging over thirty-five students, so I give those a district average chance in two thousand one hundred nineteen-two, but they're not at one percent.
No, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Next item is SBDM preschool reports, Ms. Turner.
Union West, we have some high school teams, where it all starts, for a little. Going to be a little overview of what's going on down there, then I brought some of the star teachers. And you'll notice that a couple of them are here that aren't going to present tonight, because they came for support for the other teachers that are calling in tonight. So that shows the show with like culture and teamwork that they built down there. We're currently at ninety-four students, which are half of one hundred and two. And we're getting ready to take four more that come from first steps and then from child sites. So we'd kind of like to give a couple slots open for groupings, doing a lot of changes in preschool. And then with those child sites, you know, somebody come in off the street, like, we've been sending red slides, letter in the newspaper, and somebody came in, and I think it was by itself. So we're currently working on preschool partnership grant. We're in year two of that, where we partnered, we partnered with Superior Children's Center, as well as Auden's whole day full year program. So as a result of that, we have a reading intervention with Pupi Jackson, a math intervention with Chloe Verden, and a mental health provider, Jason Milliken. They provide services not only on-site in our preschool center, but they also go on-site at Superior and Auden, so that we can make sure that we reach as many children as we can prior to kindergarten, you know, to kind of be kindergarten-ready. One of the things that I know is that it's having them on board, not only the success and the amount of growth that they've had, and I'm not going to show that for even a second, but our ability with a mental health provider on site is to kind of be able to determine whether we're dealing with children with trauma or we're dealing with children with student disabilities. So we can have a really come down and be able to grow in on the students we focus attention on for. For the disabilities or the trauma. We currently have forty-five students who will go kindergarten this year. And we have forty-nine who are two for threes. And they're considered twos whenever they're brand new three-year-olds, and changes in. So we will end up having, I don't know, usually three years. So it's kind of a young group, and they're all strong stars, and they keep it together. And sometimes I look at them often, and I'm like, "What's the hell they do?" But they do, like I said, they're strong things, really, this is, this is great. Last thing I'll say in preparation, take over, is that we are working on Out of the House, where we partner with Union County Early Childhood Council. And so we'll have a big event on I hope these things will get back indoors this year. So we'll be at the high school, take over, we have students at the high school, lots of giveaways. We'll have giveaways for math, reading, social emotional, and then in addition, community partners. So I'm going to try to reveal more, this is, this is, they're going to know this is in stuffy, but I think that sometimes there's a misconception that preschool is daycare, and it's not. There's a lot of learning going on down there, there's a lot of hard work going on down there. So I applaud them every day.
Hello, I'm Pupi Jackson. I'm the reading interventionist. And we have created a slideshow for you all, which is showing some pictures of what we do. Oh, okay. This is our, that was our Christmas, Christmas thing that we had, where they all came in, shoes and socks and stuff. So that's one that I want to get. You can go ahead.
We did have three hundred and fifty-nine people sign in for that event, which you see when we would have events, you might have fifty, and that included the children. But that event was three hundred and fifty-nine community people that came in, families. It's really growing, and we're really proud of that.
Right here, you see pictures that I've taken, where we have small groups. I pull two or three students into my room, and we do, of course, letter activities. We have a letter between. I try to do some hands-on things, and we're making doodle outfits for kids. And we make Valentine cards, and letters. So this is the Sean thing with hands-on. We have puzzles, we teach them vocabulary, we start with the letters. And we're working on vocabulary as well. This was one of our days that we had for Valentine's Day. We did dinner out in the big area that we have, and so we have some literacy activities. We have puzzles, natural letters, matching parts with the same letters. natural letters, um, matching parts with the same letters, which is always getting back for Valentine's Day. Yes, and we're matching the hearts with the same letters. And then there's also a picture there on the far right, where it shows Margaret, where, um, I go to Auden area, I've been there four years, I pull Margaret's gown and do the letter activities, we do as well. Get the Valentine's Day, let you, and we have to say a few more things. Um, I do work with, um, small groups, saw that with pictures, and throughout the week we go in each classroom, and we do a whole group lesson as well, um, because sometimes we can't be absent, and we don't get to call them, and we have, you know, we can, so we often do whole groups in the classrooms. And, um, something I would obviously say is absolutely love and envy is pouring in music as well, um, not just teaching, this is the letter A, but incorporating music with it, and like the things that we're doing, um, and some of our students that do not verbally talk words, and then I started singing the song, you know, with that singing, or whenever they see even posters, and it's just like, one of those, wow, I want to share, that was one of my wow moments, you know, it's like, who can do that? You know, it's really neat to do that, and, uh, that's one of my wow moments I wanted to share. Um, we have had themes and special indoor times for letters, um, like we had the firefighters come in and have them show the fire truck, and we had, I, I was supposed to, Mr. Hill had some students bring a tractor down for the letter T, and we tried to incorporate things, um, my, so then Mr. Jackson came down and played saxophone for the letter A, and it just got that awesome. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that song come down in the water, and, oh, yeah. But, um, we've, you know, tried to do different activities like that, so, nice connection. Um, I want to share some of the growth, some of the growth from our data, whenever I tested on in the beginning of the school year, and then I waited until December to do like a middle school year testing. The morning group showed about a seventy-one percent increase in identifying, I, I asked them the upper text letters, the lower text letters, and then identify what sounds like that. And so, the morning group showed about a seventy-one percent increase, the PM group, uh, Catholic and Dominum showed about eighty-three percent increase, and Noah, um, and then I looked at, as she said, we got the students at daycare, and a lot of those students come to our preschool as well, and so looking at those students, it's that kind of double, those are just fifteen or eighteen, um, and all of them, fifteen of them, all of us, which on December, this September, we, we, I'm gonna find out.
Ms. Kristen, can I ask, I, I think it used to be, our AM and PM both have three and four-year-olds, right? It's not more, okay. And the difference in the date, I was just curious, because I'm always, but they have three and four in both.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Floyd Verden, I'm a math interventionist. And, um, here's some of the activities that I work on, um, I move small groups too, got three children, two and three, and, um, here we're working on doing, some of the kids are a little bit older, so they're ready for, um, doing like a little bit of adding, so we've been working on, you know, getting some of the negatives and adding some objects, and, you know, putting up with how many we have. And also connecting, um, the amount with the numbers, you know, to do that, it's really important. And here, um, we're still working on, um, trying to make, um, make it really fun and, you know, exciting, um, we do a lot of hands-on, um, pretty much everything is hands-on, and working with, you know, members, um, here he's counting, counting the bees, um, and he can go up to forty or fifty, you know, with the help of the transition, then it's at twenty, thirty, maybe you know, fifty, eleven, and then, um, a little girl over there, she's, um, coming out, even coming out objects, and matching to the number, and a little girl down below, um, she's the one that gives the pledge, um, you know, she's working the puzzle and naming the numbers always, so.
Little shirt, little chicken.
And then here is a picture of working, um, at a, at a head start program in the child theater, um, here we're working on, um, doing some sorting of hearts, and then after they sorted their hearts, they got to make a pattern, so we've been working on, um, AV patterns, ADV, ADC patterns, and working on bringing in that math concept as well. And then the one at daycare, um, who had some, it was like, kind of like a Valentine game, and they had like a little present, had a number in it, and they were counting their plateaus, plateaus, and we were just counting out how many, um, it didn't matter. There we go. And this was an activity we were doing today, this was a larger activity, and we were, we were talking about bumper suits week, and, uh, this room captured this, and she's like, this is going in the classroom. And apple on top, and I was, you know, there's a book, you know, bumper suits, and I put my top, I was teaching the kids about that, and, um, I was telling them, you know, I had some apples, and I was like, how do you get balanced, ten apples on top, how do you find how to do it? And, you know, I put one on there, and of course it's all, so we work a lot with ten frames, so I had two ten frames, and then we were expecting them in the ten frames, so we started counting out, our number was seventeen, so I counted out seventeen in two ten frames, and one of the little boys looked like, now what if you put, and I showed them that they would balance in that, and he was like, what if you put that on your head and see if it balanced? So, I was like, well, I don't know, let's try, so I put it on my head, and he, they were amazed when it balanced on my head. One of the keys, you know, school fires, so. And, um, I'll share my data real quick. Um, I have from a pool, like some of my data from last year, from some of the kids, to see how much growth they had made from, from now, from here, um, and this is on number, this is on counting, um, I usually, I work on shapes, so I do shapes with them, and I get that data, I do, um, counting and get that data, then counting one to one, um, I get that data also, and then number recognition. So, I have a, kind of a little wide range of data, but this was the one, and then spring the little boy counted to ten last year, and then I tested him again in the fall, and it was twenty-nine, and then in the winter, when I tested him again, it was fifty-nine. So, look at that, that progress. And then also the daycare and preschool, um, in the spring it was twelve, in the fall it was twelve again, face consistent, and then the winter, when I tested him again, it was thirty-nine. So, I mean, that's a pretty good jump of data. And then Superior, uh, their growth, you know, working with, with them two times a week, uh, was ninety-four percent growth. So, the overall, pretty much everybody has made growth on their magical.
Great, thank you.
I've been like this long, and I said, well, I don't, um, somebody said, you wanna go on the next? Oh, is that it? Last time I was with you all, it was summer, I brought the social animals, right, I brought the actual red balloon, that you, sorry y'all, I can't say that. Um, each week, it's a fifteen-week course with the summer, um, each week has a different thing, social motion. This last week with routines, it's out of the slot, um, and it teaches the children, um, the routines, coping skills, relaxation, uh, I don't rather send it on a smaller group class than last week for Watford, um, the routine, it's very important for children, everybody knows, friends, teachers and all that. What we do is we start out with a little book each week, we read in a small group. Our group has been lightly, Summer Kings has, by Jim Henson, a Apple TV production, it's a ten-minute cartoon, but it's with the summer, it's like, little, each book has brought to life, so we've been watching that each week. Um, and the small group, I'm not sure if you guys can see, it's like, it's like, it's taken up to three weeks to do one library, um, but some of the stuff we skip over this because, I don't have data going, but that, that I do have, like, just hearing the kids, like a little boy, uh, today, she went to the store and said, I would like to, I'll sit by myself and watch, but he, maybe it's like, another kid will say, hey, we've been up for a while, or they're wanting to do whatever, and also, you're wrong there, and we just can't figure out how to measure, they watch. I'm not sure if you guys can see the, uh, these are routine cards, each summer games, each five, there's a couple of books, animals, and that can do pretty soon.
When they were doing the puppet show, when we were down there, puppet show, parlor things.
In some part, we just incorporated, that, this has been done for years, they love puppet.
Good language, but I was wondering, I thought, I wonder if they're picking up on that.
Usually in a small group, I recommend puppet shows, and do a thing that's nice on creative ways, yeah.
Also add in, to let you all know that, um, as a result of the conversation and success that we've had in the preschool, we'll, we've expanded it to the elementary school, so now all of the elementary guys, the council has it as well as, as, as they arising, so around with this classroom, so they're using it in instruction, so the language will really help with transition for, for our kindergarten friends. So, as I wrap that up, acknowledge my, this is the end, and, um, before our leave.
Society and the early literacy, literacy, I wish we could have a universal preschool. It's like these three important areas.
Okay, next item is approval of minutes, do I have an motion to approve the minutes?
I'm a.
Ms. Martin made the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Clinton made the second, all in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? Next item is financial, number one, approval of financial report, Ms. Morse.
Okay, um, the financial report for the month ending January thirty-first, we'll begin with a review of our cash. So, cash reported by our balance sheet at the beginning of the month was approximately twenty-seven million, seventy-three thousand dollars. We experienced a two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-dollar increase ending the month, January thirty-first, that cash per balance sheet of twenty, approximately twenty-seven million, three-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand dollars. Cash reported by our bank statements was twenty-seven million, eight-hundred-and-seven-thousand, and with reconciling checks and our items in an amount of four-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand dollars. Uh, when you look at total cash reported about our balance sheet, uh, with the increase of approximately two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand, five-hundred dollars, we experienced an increase in general fund cash of just over three-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand dollars, um, and that was offset by a decrease in our special revenue fund of just over forty-six thousand dollars in our construction fund of sixty, approximately sixty-one thousand dollars. We also saw an increase in our bits of our cash of thirty, almost thirty-two thousand dollars, our daycare fund of just over ten thousand dollars. When we look at a review of activity by fund, beginning with general fund, monthly revenue was approximately one million, seven-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand dollars. We collected approximately two-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand in property taxes, a hundred-and-seventeen-thousand in utility taxes, seven-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand in our monthly S E C payment, ten thousand in franchise taxes, fifty-six thousand in motor vehicle tax, eighty-eight thousand in, in lieu of tax, and that's T V A, that's annual payment, that we receive one time each year, fifteen thousand in interest income. We received also a cost report settlement of a hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand for Medicaid, um, and I would just like to give Ms. Turner and her department, um, kudos for that Medicaid, that's an annual cost settlement, and some of that is out of our control and depending on on settlement rates across native Kentucky for all school districts. However, Ms. Turner's department is probably the best at billing Medicaid in any county or district throughout Kentucky. We capture every Medicaid billable cost that there is, transportation, asset, and, um, trainings or whatnot, uh, Ms. Turner and her department are to go to people throughout the state as far as how to capture eligible cost for Medicaid reimbursement. Um, so the hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand, although, although some of that's out of our control, a lot of it is controlled by her department in the form of the exercises that we talked through billing. Yes, and that funding is very critical to our general fund, because that covers, uh, the majority of the cost of our nurses that we have. Um, also, we received thirty-one thousand dollars in funds transferred from our special revenue fund, two thousand in telephonic tax. We also during, uh, January received in advance a three-hundred-thousand dollars from the mutual for insurance proceeds from the flood recovery, uh, and that was going to the general fund. So, year-to-date receipts are eleven million, six-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand dollars, um, and you can see the breakdown, I won't look through every line item, but year-to-date receipts were up six percent, or six-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand dollars over prior year. And so I detailed the areas, the two main areas that behind the increase are S E C, that's two-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand dollars, and again, that's additional funding they gave us this year, insurance proceeds of three-hundred-thousand dollars, uh, Medicaid billing is up a hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand, and then that's offset by reductions of, in interest income, and then prior year we had transfers year-to-date of a hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars, but year-to-date we're up six thousand, six thousand dollars, and that's not necessarily timing, um, items. Year-to-date expenditures for general fund totaled nine million, twenty-four thousand dollars, that's a nine-point-four, uh, percent increase over prior year, or seven-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand dollars. And so I, as I've done in the past, and you have that, um, in your monthly report, the detail by object code, I won't go through each individual item, but because they haven't changed month to month, the items that have changed is, to date through January, we've had spent forty-two thousand dollars out of general fund for flood recovery costs, um, and that was some of the, um, additional time that we paid staff for recovery, and then some incidental, um, the roll-off cost, and then some other minor costs, um, for cleaning supplies as well. Yes, we already received three-hundred-thousand dollars, you know, re, advanced, so more than coverage on cost at this point. Um, and then some other just timing issues, uh, district admin is at thirty-four thousand dollars, that's just due to the timing of when we paid the insurance, um, but that's offset by forty-two thousand dollars in reduction of payroll costs. So, of the increase, approximately seventy-six thousand is just due to timing, and we already burned it itself, of that seven-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand. Uh, special revenue fund two, monthly revenue is three-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand dollars. We received three-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand through our federal grant, monthly federal cash receipt, we received fifty-one thousand in state grants, and then our quarterly three-thousand dollars every night away. Um, looking at, um, expenditures for our grant, expenditures are ten million, nine-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand dollars, as I report each month, I remove that, um, if you recall, that's where our layback money went in, the grant, eight point, almost eight-point-six million dollars, so we, and we transferred that to the construction fund, so it came into our fund two, and then we transferred it out, which is an expenditure. So, when I, in that ten million, nine-seventy-seven, if we remove that transfer out, um, and where we spent our money, we spent five-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand, or eighty-six percent of our grant on direct instruction, um, eighty-eight thousand in daycare, and a hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand in, and then I did put a note, you'll see that eight million, five-eighty-two transferred from the, uh, three-sixty. And then we transferred thirty-one thousand dollars out of, um, fund two, to match SFCC offers assistance. Uh, district activity fund, fund twenty-one, we received ten thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty dollars by the way, and transferred from the school, that's five thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty from Sturgis, and five thousand and forty dollars from Newtown. Uh, fund twenty-five is updated annualing, capital fund three-ten, outlet fund three-ten, there's no activity to report, fund three-twenty, there's no activity to report, construction fund, fund three-sixty. We dispersed, um, three thousand, seven-hundred, three thousand, seven-hundred-and-two dollars for, for the Coda project. Uh, debt service fund, fund four-hundred, there's no activity to report. Proprietary funds, food service, monthly date receipts were a hundred-and-forty-five-thousand, a hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand was through reimbursable noodles. A hundred-and-thirty-five thousand was through reimbursable meals, uh, for the month of December, approximately sixty-one-hundred in non-reimbursable meals, twenty-six-hundred in contract meals at the Auden area and thirteen-hundred in interest income. Year-to-date expenses are up five-point-six percent, uh, they total six-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand dollars. And then as I've reported prior month, it's primarily due to an increase in POS system and then the salary increases that we implemented on the salary schedule and increased food costs, which were up twenty-five percent. Uh, daycare fund, fund fifty-two, we reported, uh, ten thousand dollars of tuition to the Apple program, uh, six thousand of that was for state tuition assistance and we dispersed a hundred-and-eighty dollars.
Six-one-point-eight-one-zero to discuss superintendent's contract, concession for care, six-one-point-eight-one-o, discussion or hearings which might lead to the appointment, discipline or dismissal of an individual employee, member or student without restricting that employee's members or student's right to a public hearing request.
Before we do that, could I, something you said earlier about CTE, and I mean, we were talking about the, uh, locational building project, information that we've been sitting on. Do you want to get more information on what we're sending in as far as what we're interested in as far as CTE projects?
No, that's still, we're still in the works and we discussed that at our, still the planning meeting. We don't have all those dramatics yet. We had to, um, get things set up for the silly plan and we have to send that in as far as the data that we have support and the pages seem to get back, a little mixed up. So it's still, it's a procedure you have to go through, so we're not at that.
We haven't told them what we're interested in yet or what programs.
Well, we know, they know the program, they know the program, but we don't have the details of what it would look like. And when we get all of that information, uh, at that point, then we'll also sit down with those CTE teachers in the six pathways and, you know, start going through that and we'll have more information in the future.
I'd like to see that, what are we turning in as far as?
The application, um, drawing, we have those, because we can get you an architect. But we're not at the point where we want to make a decision yet or anything. But it's just a long process to go through. We're definitely.
I remember it's something about one position.
Yes. We don't have, um, anything different than what they're going to session, right? Now, I can send you the email that we sent to our architect that showed the preferred programs and if, that's.
And how does that derive? Just from, see, parent CTE teachers or the community engagement involved in all that as far as what we want?
So.
I didn't say the students are vetting?
There was community involvement on, um, the local facility plan, we have that. And then for this grant, when we wrote the grant, we had input from Joe Donan and, um, Susan Miles as far as our support. And then also what we did was we went and talked with the CTE teachers to say, if we were able to affect it, what do you think it pushes needs? And we also look at all our new decisions from the past, because we've had a needs assessment listed for that money for some time now, right? And it's been for years because if you look at our facility plan, it's also on there as well. So what we did is we looked at the needs assessment, a lot of the silly plan, and talked with our teacher and also got others to support. It was a frequent turnaround on that grant application.
And that's over here.
Oh, yeah, August last, you know, maybe the year last, we initially were rejected and then they came back and funded it through the next, next legislative question. But there are only certain programs funded through layback from the new campus school who are limited to those pathways, um, as pathways, Miss Shepherd shared earlier. So those pathways, and it's not really new programs, so it's update your existing programs, right? And that might be the question, if you need, if it was asked, it's not like we can win a new program. It's to update the program if you couldn't have it in a way. It's more of an update than follow-up, like maybe seeing a new program. But the reasoning, you know, the pathways, we're seeing, pick those pathways, the architectural to do and, um, the local utilities. So if you pick agriculture, there's specific specs that go on with agriculture. So if you say, this is our pathway, the state will say, leaving things you must have, like so many base for welding, so many things, things like that. So they tell you, here's what you have to have, and here's the space, minimal space for that pathway. So we, that's why we had to start with that, being, you send that to the state and like, okay, now we'll send that to the architect, go into the city, so here's what we have to have and what else is needed. And you can start going down, but it's just a long process, you have to go through it and say, oh, we're here. The first application. So this is what we have to make. But, um, that, that will be very nice. We will, you know, like, um, green house, we'll be in green house. Safety piece too, we can come around these roads, all those things where, as far as some of the needs, we'll say, and what the teachers. But it's not like, if we were building a brand-new locational building, no staff, maybe we would have like facilities to, what, you know, you should do, and everybody would like to know, and this is more of a step.